Called the order six P M. Each one in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which is sent. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
All right, pursuant to the public meetings act, notice what this meeting was given in the annual meeting notice, which was emailed to the record. News Harold, the office of the county clerk, it puts on his website and building boards on November twenty eighth, twenty two.
Eleven A red ramen. Trustee after. Trustee Drakeford. Trustee Gloven.
Sandra, you're muted.
I'm here, present.
Trustee Moody.
Present.
Trustee Nutter. Trustee Poe.
Present.
Trustee Ramirez.
Present.
Trusty Smith.
Present.
Vice Chair Tannis.
Present.
Chairman Marco.
Residency number one, consideration limits of the board of trustees, March nineteenth, twenty twenty four. We have a motion to accept them. There are any corrections?
I'm moving.
Back second.
Roll.
Yes.
Uh, trusty Gloven.
Mike, you're muted. We're voting on the minutes.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you now. The motion on the floor.
Motion on the floor for the minutes, uh, Mike.
Yeah.
Trustee Diop today. Trusty Moody.
Yes.
Trusty Poe.
Yes.
Trusty Ramirez.
Yes.
Trusty Pitt.
Yes.
Vice Chair Tannis. Chairman Marco.
Yes.
Ready?
Ready.
All right.
Let's do the virtual.
So well, we're gonna turn over to Dr. Kneevy first. And when, when, when we're in Passaic, we talk healthcare. So every, every year when we're here, just to remind all of you, and I know Jackie talked about this. We got a ten million dollar grant to build a new building out here. And that's for health, for health sciences. So we're very excited about that. Lots of plans in the future. So Jack. You're gonna go do a little virtual tour for you.
Okay, so I'm here to talk about healthcare programs in Passaic, and I have the presentation divided into two areas. Number one, what we have now, and number two, some possibilities for the future. Okay, so some of this you probably know, but we have currently, we have the healthcare program offerings are the AAS in nursing, AAS in radiography, AAS in surgical tech, and two career cert certificates, one in medical assistant and one in dialysis tech. And I just want to introduce Rosemary Rocchio, who's in the audience, who, who actually is the director of the medical assistant program, and also Amanda Caruso, who is the director of the surgical tech program. And so I do also want to call your attention to one thing, which will be important when we talk about where we want to go in the future. If you add up the majors in all of these programs, there are nine hundred and forty-two majors. Okay, so that's a really large part of the enrollment. So we'll just talk a little bit about nursing. We all know that's a big program here. We have six hundred and eighty-two majors. Currently, we have students in Sussex. You remember Sussex, we started that partnership in nineteen ninety-five, and we have forty students out there. We have a hundred and fifty currently enrolled here in Passaic. We're accredited by ASIN from twenty, during twenty twenty nine, twenty nineteen, and we're coming up again. Is it twenty-nine, twenty twenty-nine? We're coming up again for that. We have a hundred percent pass rate on NCLEX for twenty twenty-three, which is absolutely astounding. And we are also accredited by the Board of Nursing, which you have to be in order to operate a pre-licensed program in New Jersey. So the second program, radiography, a hundred and seventy-four majors, from twenty-four to thirty about that. We have a completion rate of fifty-three percent. A hundred percent pass rate on the registration for radiological technicians based on first-time takers. And that's the other thing I want to make a point of. When we say nursing has a hundred percent pass rate, that means first-time takers. We don't include people who are repeaters. Okay, and then on this, they just got accredited in twenty twenty-two, and the next cell study is twenty thirty. And then we had, this is our fiftieth year, twenty twenty-four of the radiography program. Now, one of the things that we could consider doing when we have our new expansion here is moving the radiology program here. That would be an option for us, where we would have all of our healthcare programs here on campus, on this campus. Okay, well, surgical tech is our next one, and we're preparing students for certified surgical, to become certified surgical technicians. And you can see where they're employed and what they do. There's a certification exam for them also. And this program just started this year, and what do you have about, what, eight or nine?
We have nine.
Nine, we have nine, but we have twenty in the whole program so far. They're just not in surgical tech program, right? And the course of surgical tech. We, we will have to be accredited, accredited by a specialty accreditor for surgical tech. We're expecting that in September twenty twenty, twenty-five. And right now I have nine. It's a moving target. Every time you look at, at the numbers, it's a different number. So I think we have twenty students and we have, what, how many did you say in the program? Six?
We have nine.
Nine, nine now in the program. Okay. And a career certificate, which means that this is a thirty-credit program in career medical assistant. We have fifty-eight in there. The anticipated graduation for twenty twenty-five would be twenty-two. And this is what this, what the, the students are able to do after they graduate. I'll just make one point. One of the questions from the Middle States visitor was, well, how did you know that, that we should have this program? And so I said, well, because we have advisory councils, and one of the things when we had an advisory council with St. Joe's was, oh, our medical assistants, they're running all of our clinics. So that's why we knew that that's a program that we should have here. They also take the certification examinations. They're not, they're not required to be licensed to certify it in New Jersey, but they do take the certification exam. And these were the pass rates for the certification exams for the medical assistant program. And this is basically where they're employed, pretty much a vast area, areas of employment. And then this is another certificate program, dialysis tech. And this prepares students to work with dialysis, with hemodialysis patients. They, there is a certification exam for them, and they have to, I believe, pass that within a certain length of time. They are employed basically in places where patients are being treated for chronic renal failure. And these are their, these are their job functions, and again, they must pass either a competency, competency test or some kind of certification exam. Now, here's some things to consider in the future. Dental hygiene. Diagnostic medical sonographer. Nuclear med technician. And a career certificate in steril processing technician. And they are all pretty high earning, high wage earning, earnings. Most of them are in demand in terms of employment. And there are some, many of them are certainly more diverse than others, but there are certainly definitely race and gender diversity in these programs. So we'll talk a little bit about each one of them. Dental hygiene, again, you know, everyone has had some interaction with a dental hygienist, whether it was positive or negative. They're in clinics, they're in dental offices, our patient centers, and they take your patients, they clean your teeth. They assist with oral surgery, they do oral screening. They have to be graduates of accredited programs with a degree in high dental hygiene. And they are also licensed by the state of New Jersey, and their salary can be pretty high. The national median is one-four, but in Passaic County, it's a lot higher. Now, the one thing with dental hygiene is sometimes they don't actually work full-time anywhere, but work part-time in many dental offices. And then also another important thing is, right now, dental hygiene, this sector is at risk for retirement-related vacancies. Okay, the medical sonographer, and we've all had some interaction with people taking sonograms, right? So they're all over. And they're, they have a couple of different titles, ultrasound tech, ultrasound technologist, sonogram, sonographer. And they operate the imaging machine, and they have a pretty high salary also, as you can see. And this, in our area here in Passaic County, is, is really looking for sonographers. And then, again, this group is at risk for retirement-related vacancies, this position. And they're also, they're also credentialed by the medical, the registry for diagnostic medical sonography. So that's another possibility for us. And then the degree in nuclear medicine. And so the nuclear techno, medical, medical technology, instead of taking X-rays, injects you with something. And then they look to see what, what, what kind of pictures they get from internal organs to see if there's anything that's abnormal. They have a fairly high salary also. They need a associate degree. They actually need licensure from New Jersey, and there are also some specialty areas you can get into with this medical technician. You can specialize in CT, you can specialize in nuclear cardiology. And I think that is the last one. Last but not least, sterile processing technician works in, works to sterilize, clean, process, assemble, distribute medical supplies around the hospital. They do a lot, they do a lot of sterilization from the OR. That would be probably their biggest market. And anything else that has to be sterilized. And this, this is a program that you require, they want certification after three years of employment. And these are the certification people. It's a four-hundred-hour fieldwork and online coursework, and the salary runs about fifty-six, six-nine-oh to five, fifty thousand. This, before I get to anything else, this is probably something that we could easily get into. It's very much related to surgical tech. It requires all of the same sterilizing. It's a four-hundred-hour fieldwork, and I'm sure we can find some hospitals that would be willing to take students in. And we could either decide it could be online coursework, or it could be in person. And we already, I already checked out her, her surgical suite there, and I found a room for it. So so probably not expensive to do, and a thirty-credit certificate doesn't take as long as putting on a degree. Oh, let's see, I think, okay, so last but not least, I just wanted to say that the things to consider would be dental hygiene, nuclear med technician, sonogram, which one did I leave out? I left one out. I can't think of, but what I would say, my, my pick would be to do ultrasound sonography. I think there's a big market for it. It doesn't require a lot of space. It requires probably an expensive director. But, you know, other than that, and then, of course, I do favor dental hygiene, expensive. It would, it would require some alterations here in the building, because we would have to have patient, patient access. We'd be taking patients in from the community for dental work. But, you know, there is a cost factor there. But the other part of it you can, you consider is, as nursing has a registration of nine hundred and sixty-four students, or maybe not, seven hundred, seven hundred and twenty-four. Some of those will not go to nursing. They will be attracted to other disciplines once they get here. Many of them are attracted to business, believe it or not, yeah, would seem unlikely, and, and criminal justice, right? So, you know, you can, it's, it's also about enrollment, and they're attracted to these programs, and sometimes they decide, they watch television and see what these people do, and then they decide that's not for them. So it would attract students. It would attract students, and it would attract the public, because we would be doing, fulfilling a dental service. So that's where we are. We have time to make up our mind, but, you know.
Yep, well, not much time.
Okay.
So up on the screen there.
Oh, good.
We're gonna give you a little virtual tour of down, downstairs. As soon as they figure out how to put the big picture up there. Alex is on it. Do you want to talk us through the, give us the tour, man?
Sure. So you're at the, as soon as you walk in, you're to the left, this is our, our long hallway. To the door to the right is the first operating room, if they were kind of go in there. So currently, we have the operating room to where we can have ten students to one instructor per operating room. So currently, all of my nine students are working in here, so we have two setup stations. As, as you can see, your patient. Sponge counter to kind of give it a real-life experience. We're waiting for our anesthesia machines to come in, so that's on its way. And our OR lights are back ordered at this point in time to make it the full effect. But we have laparoscopic tower, because laparoscopic and robotic surgery are really big right now. So to give them that almost real-life experience out there, with the exception of a ten-million-dollar robot here on campus to get the full experience. So we do have a stretcher. We're gonna actually practice moving our mannequin from, to and from the stretcher. And we kind of practice with each other too, so they can get people's different types and weights, and so they can feel how they move from to and far on the stretcher. You're making your way to the second OR, which would be on the right. It looks just like OR one. There we go. Okay, so again, we have two setups, one to the back and, or on each side, and then we have the mannequin. We have yet to be in here, but then I'm gonna bring them in here, so they kind of get thrown off a little bit of being complacent, and they keep going to the same tables and same sides, so they get used to adapting to different environments.
Just make sure you all know, that's on the first floor of this building.
Yeah. Their second set of scrub sinks, where we first started, the first set was behind us, so it'll reach for OR two and OR three. They're gonna walk into this area where this is where Dr. Kneevy's scoping out for sterilizing. But this is technically supposed to be my classroom within my lab, but honestly, we're gonna grow out of that very, very quickly. So it is proper spacing for sterilizing, for search tech to learn, and for that future program. And this is actually OR three. We haven't been able to get the equipment for it, but that is the consumables right now that we, that they're learning about all of their draping, scrubbing, darning, and gloving, as much real-life situations, dressings as possible. So when you get out there, they can't come back and say, hey, I don't know what this is. So. Uh, there is, in the way beginning, they didn't show it. As soon as you walk in through the door, I do have another storage. I have all of our different instrumentation trays in there, behind a locked door because of them being so expensive. But we did pass some of them that were on the rack in the hallway that are in containers and/or wrapped, because that's how they will get them in the actual operating room, so they know how to, as you can see right there on that first rack, you see some metal trays, and then on the opposite side of them, you'll see some wrap trays. So, and that all is part of sterilizing, believe it or not. So when they're sterilized, that's how they'll come up through the sterilization, after being cleaned and sterilized, they'll come up to us looking like that. And then we take them into the operating room, and we check to ensure that the, the serality of them is properly done. And then we put them through scenarios that if there's no indicator, or if it's wet, or what do they do in that sense, and they're catching on that we can't use it, so we get a whole new set. So we rewrap it and redo the whole thing. That's our locked door to where our sharps are, scalpels, needles, syringes, so it stays up and locked. And then obviously our second scrub sink, and if they go in that door, it is not locked, but they can go in, but it's well-hidden. You'll see the whole another. There you go. Gowns, and to the right, those are all of our instrument trays. That's how they come. I'm just waiting for more trays to come in, so we can make actual full trays. There's cardiac, there's neuro, there's eyes, and consoles, all different types of specialties that we will introduce them to, whether before clinical or while we're talking about it during our lectures, whether in clinical, to enhance their learning. So everyone's very impressed, so I thank you very much for all your hard work giving. But I will have to say, I've shared some of the pictures throughout the construction and stuff in our search tech community. If this is not one of the largest, it is probably the largest search tech lab in the United States.
Really? Wow.
Usually, typically, you, most programs get one large space like this, and half of it's a classroom, and they might have two setups that are not divided by walls, that we kind of put tape on the floor and use our imagination. But this is like blowing people's minds, so we're, we're making our mark on that one. I'm very proud of getting us out there in that.
All right, any questions on any of the health sciences, or anything we talked about tonight? Okay.
I just look forward to graduating some nurses from Passaic High School there.
We'll be ready. All right, reports. So first, just our last words on the Middle States for a while. Some of you were, were able to be here last week when we had the exit interview from our team that visited here, to say the least, we're very pleased. To say the most, it, it was somewhat unusual in terms of how good it was. You know, so there are three things that Middle States can possibly say to us. They can give us a requirement, and a requirement means that you did not pass the standard, and that we're requiring you to do this. That would be very, very bad. What is very common is for colleges to get recommendations. And I mean, I've seen some colleges get ten, fifteen recommendations at, at a time. And what recommendations are, in the Middle States world, is a recommendation says, okay, you're doing okay, you're passing the standard, but we feel if you don't start taking this seriously and doing something, you run the risk of being out of compliance with the standard. That's what a recommendation means. We had no recommendations. And that, that truly, it's the first time since Middle States has been coming here that we got a report without recommendation. And truthfully, it's, it's kind of rare in some cases, you know, that, that they will come to a college and not, and so we are, the, the last thing you get is just some collegial advice. Some things that you can choose to ignore or choose to pay attention to, and they had a few collegial advice for us. Most of the collegial advice were things we said to ourselves in our self-study, that we made the recommendation to ourselves, that it's something we wanted to work on, and they parroted it back to us, saying, yep, that's a good idea. You should, we think that's a great idea, it should work better. So we're really, really pleased the way, now, nothing is final until Middle States takes formal action at the end of June. But based on the way this report was written, and the fact that there were no recommendations, I'm not very concerned about what the, the final outcome is, is going to be. So we're, we're really pleased that it's true. People here worked very hard. I, I spoke to the academic council today. You know, it's, it's not just the people who hung out in Jackie's conference room, basically, for sixteen hours a day for two or three months, which is truthfully what they did, of putting it all together and preparing your reports. But it's, it's everything that they had to report on. It's not, you know, putting, putting your best foot forward by putting a good report together is really important. And, and we did a great job on doing that, but if you didn't have good information to put together, it, it wouldn't matter. So, you know, we had a lot of great things to talk about, and we figured out how to, how to say. And so I, we, we could not be more pleased. So it, it went really well, so.
Great job.
Dr. Rose, I'm the doctor.
Oh, please, I'm, I'm sorry. They all got to know Donna through the years, so. All right, and before we move on, I'm going to turn to Dr. Stephen Hardy. So, so while Middle States was getting your report at ten AM in, in the theater last week, at Wednesday, Stephen was defending his dissertation. And, and the fact that I just called him Dr. Hardy means he passed. We have a newly-minted doctor here, and so let's hear if Dr. Say anything you want about it.
I don't like it, Steve.
But say anything about the variants.
Oh, various.
Still high from there.
As I said at the last meeting, we do expect to come in within budget, meaning we're not going to exceed the budget. I just brought your attention to a couple of things. The first is on the student needs side, you'll see that we missed the revenue number there by a million. What that really is, is, so at the end of the year, we do an accounting transaction, we put a certain portion of revenue, they cross the fiscal years, because the courses cross fiscal years, so we were all on that calculation. However, if you go down to the salaries, you'll see that we have savings to cover that. We could have adjusted that revenue number, but we last year was like the first real year where there were no herd funding funds available. We had a lot of students that came back, students that came back. They did register at the time when the pandemic took place, but we wanted them to take courses, so we wrote their balances off, or we either funded them. And so last year, our write-off was a lot larger, and it was larger for that reason. And so that's why we kind of left that calculation where it was, and then also the additional write-offs that took place that year. And so that had more of a normalizing effect. And so the other thing I'll draw your attention to is, we built the budget saying we're gonna use front balance, I'm looking at the revenue situation. So we said we're gonna use two point two five million, so that number's more like two million, yeah. Five, about two hundred thousand dollars. We expect that to be a little bit better, but as I started off with, we're not going to exceed the budget, so we're gonna wait.
And as you heard, those who were at, there on Wednesday for the Middle States report, they talked about the great fiscal condition the college was saying. So that was. So that was, that was great to hear. And I'm going to ask Patty, we're in your building, so would you like to welcome everybody?
Yes, well, welcome, welcome. Welcome to Passaic Academic Center. We opened our doors in 2009. So this is exciting. We're growing. You see the parking lot, that's the future, right? We're going to build there. So welcome everyone, and I hope everybody after the meeting is ever here to take advantage and look at surgical tech and medical assistance too. Medical assistance here, we have grown that one from two beds, I believe, to eight or how many?
We have five, yes, seven.
That's a good sign. So thank you very much.
And just before we move on, just add to what Jackie was talking about. Health science programs are very expensive. They're not cheap. And now that doesn't stop us. If, if, if we were trying, if we worried always about what a program costs, we would never do nursing. Not, not in a million years would we ever do nursing. It's, it's a very expensive program, but our community needs it and we're able and we're doing. And of course, you know, we started nursing in the early years of the college. And, you know, maybe things weren't quite as expensive back then and stuff like that. So today, unfortunately, when we're trying to assess what programs to start, we do have to take those kinds of things into account. There is no doubt this community needs dental hygienists and dental assistants. I think some of you heard, I was approached by Delta Dental, who, you know, called the college and said, look, a lot of the offices that we have affiliations with in Passaic County, specifically in the city of Passaic and the city of Patterson, say that they're having a hard time attracting dental hygienists and dental assistants to work in their offices. And their offices are not running at full force because they could get dentists. They can't get dental hygienists and dental assistants there. So there is no doubt that this community needs us to do this. We have to figure out, and that's, we're in the process of doing this, is, and we know it's going to be expensive, but is it going to be too expensive that it's prohibitive? Would we be making a bad decision by creating a program that's going to drain us too much? We know we have to subsidize it, there's no question. But the question is, how much are we going to have to subsidize it? And are there any community organizations out there? Foundations which support these kinds of things that would like to support us? We know that there are, we've already been approached saying that we could get some money. But, you know, we're not worried about money for the first two, three years that, that I'm sure we could get. The question is, you know, five years down the road, 10 years down the road, are we stuck with, you know, will a board trustees be sitting here, you know, for the healthcare update 10 years from now? And, and, you know, we say, oh, boy, back in 2024, we made a terrible decision to start a dental hygiene program. And now, you know, it's costing us, you know, a billion dollars a year that we're subsidizing. That's what we have to try and figure out. But these, you know, difficult questions to answer. And we got to make that decision.
Can I, can I ask you a question on that? Is Delta, if Delta has approached you, can't they put us in touch with some of these nonprofits who support these type of programs?
Actually, Delta has their own foundation to support these types of programs. That they, they already committed that they, they would help us. It's just a question of, you know, you need a dentist to supervise the program. It, it, they're expensive programs to run. We'd have to employ a dentist. That's what we got to figure out.
Okay.
Yeah. I just wanted to add that, just to give a little flavor of what we're trying, what we're trying to figure out, you know. You know, we know sonography won't be as expensive to start. So, you know, so we got to, and you know, I, I think, you know, the idea here that we could use the existing, some of the existing facilities at Surgical Tech to also to some other programs. And hey, if you already built the facility, that, that makes it a lot, lot easier. So we're trying to figure it out. But some of those salaries you saw there were pretty impressive. In terms of, you know, I was recently talking with some, some of the folks at NJIT and students graduating with bachelor's degrees in engineering are not even making those salaries. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and time and a half on the holidays and weekends, you know.
So, you know, these are great careers for people and, you know, you know what our mission, you know what our mission here is at the college? And if you read that mission statement that's hanging on the walls behind you here and everywhere else in the place, you know, it talks about this is what, this is what we're about. And these programs fit directly into our mission and that's why they're so important to us. So we got to figure it out. All right, instructional items, we have a couple of articulation group. Jackie, do you have them?
Yeah. Couple with Lou Patterson in our human services program into some of the bachelor program. Now we have the AS in human service into a new social program over at Lou Patterson. And interestingly enough, you know, I was sort of very concerned about having all of our articulation doing it in order for the middle states. I don't know if they actually looked at. So that's articulation doing it. We have a new career certificate in supply chain management. That's a 30 credit certificate. And we also have a strategic achievement in that supply chain. So the student involved in the certificate of a senior or a career certificate could eventually apply those credits to the degree if they saw fit. We're terminating the Rutgers program with the AS in psychosocial. We have, this is sort of a pattern now we're seeing with Rutgers. We also terminated.
Well, they terminated.
Yeah, I'm sorry, they terminated the OTA program. And I think it just shows that they're looking for, healthcare is looking for a more educated population. Here, everyone has to have a degree. And the last is, this is the Farperkin's career and technical education.
Move me somebody around. Jackie, can you explain to the trustees, why the Rutgers letter is dated November 15, 2021? Yes. Yes, because we'd be teaching the students out. So, so what happens when, when, when they tell us that a pro, that, that when we, when we finish a program, from the day they say that we're no longer going to offer the program, every student who's currently enrolled in the program has to be able to finish the program before we can terminate the program. So we, we, we were notified by Rutgers three years ago that the program was, that they were stopping the program, but it's taken three years for students to proceed through the program and now they are done.
We never really had a large number of students.
You just signed diplomas for that program the other day. That was sort of those, those were, those are the programs we're teaching out.
There'll be collector signs.
Right. Okay. And in people's houses all around New Jersey, your name's going to be on there on their diploma, so. All right, so. All right, business items, we have the FY 25 tuition and fee schedule. We're bringing it a little earlier to you than we normally do to try and give students a little more notice about exactly what, what their cost is going to be for next year. Of course, significant here, as you can see, most of the fees have remained the same. From one year to another, tuition is up about 2.7%, which is not bad considering where inflation is, that we've been able to, to keep it at that level. Do we need to raise it more? Yes, but are we showing restraint? Yes, and that's, I believe, the right thing to do. So if you have any questions on that. No, we have an executive session. Do you want to do it now?
But I'm fine now.
Yes. And happy to, do you agree with Passaic County Lightpad? Do you want to do that now or do you want to do that? Do it either way. So I can do it now. The agreement involving Passaic County, the college, NJ Edge and Lightpad is so that we could run fiber cable and connect the Patterson campus with the Rifle Camp Environmental Center that we're building up at Rifle Camp Park. Apparently this took a while to negotiate. And so we have this agreement and it took a little bit, but it's pretty straightforward. And I certainly recommend approval of that. All right, and we can, we are going to go to executive session this evening.
Yep. We have a motion on resolution number two to meet an executive session.
So move.
Second.
Who made the motion, please?
Ramirez.
Well, Keisha, was your second?
Yes, that was me.
Second, great, thank you, Keisha.
Trustee Drakeford.
Yes.
Trustee Glover.
Yes.
Trustee Deirdre N. Trustee Moody.
Yes.
Trustee Poe.
Yes.
Trustee Ramirez.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Vice Chair Tannis.
Yes.
Chairman Marco.
Yes. All right, so we're in executive session. I'm going to pull everybody in now. Everybody on Zoom, I'm going to bring you into an executive session.
Okay.
All right, so now we have a public hearing, so I'm going to notice that this public hearing was emailed to the Record News Herald, posted on the PCCC website and boner boards on April tenth, twenty twenty four.
Oh, God, back up there. Public hearing, our power is slipping. Public hearing will now be held on the proposed FY twenty five tuition and fees scheduled for Passaic County Community College. Does anyone wish to be heard? No one here? Anyone online? No one online? Okay, can I have a motion to accept that?
Right, does the hour just close the public session?
Sure, no one else wishing to address the board, they declared the public hearing closed.
Public hearing is closed.
Press.
Power.
Very impressive.
All right, DeMarco.
All right, next action. Back to you, Keisha. All right, let's see. Now, resolution number three. Okay, may I have a motion to adopt resolution number three? Consent resolution items as set forth in Veranda dated April sixteenth, twenty twenty four.
Move it.
Second.
Motion by Barbara, second by Mr. Moody, trustee Moody, roll.
Trustee Drakeford.
Yes.
Trustee Glovan.
Mike, you're on mute, we're voting on resolution three.
Yes.
Trustee Deodene.
Yes.
Trustee Moody.
Yes.
Trustee Poe.
Yes.
Trustee Ramirez.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Vice Chair Tannen.
Yes.
Chairman Marco.
Yes.
Okay, are there any remarks from the public? Hearing none.
Okay.
Any remarks from the trustees?
I just want to say congratulations again to the college on doing a remarkable job with Middle States and getting like flying stars and flying colors, just congratulations. Amazing job, it was amazing being a part of it, and I thank you for allowing me to be a part of it, but congratulations. Job well done.
Very well said. Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So move.
Trustee Ramirez, a second?
Second.
Okay, trustee Glovan, second? All right, roll call?
Trustee Drakeford.
Yes.
Trustee Glovan.
Yes.
Trustee Deodene.
Yes.
Trustee Moody.
Yes.
Trustee Poe.
Yes.
Trustee Ramirez.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Hi, Barbara.
Karen, you're voting yes to adjourn?
Yes.
Very good.
Vice Chair Tannen. Chairman Marco.
Yes. Okay, the meeting's adjourned at six fifty eight.